The reference, uh, page numbers. And I just had some questions about when I read that.
How you doing, sir?
I'm good, George. How are you?
Good. Life is good.
How's your semester going?
Uh.
It's faculty. Because everything's been online, you know, so they're just, you know, the labs aren't as full as they could be.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission on Monday, February 28th, 2022, at 7 o'clock PM. Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, invincible, worthy of justice.
Clark, could you please take the role?
Commissioner Alsager?
Here.
Commissioner Esman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Present.
Commissioner Ronan?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Present.
Mayor Preshbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right.
Since we have a quorum, we will continue the meeting. Um, we do not have any proclamations or presentations today, but I would like to take a moment of silence, um, for their Ukrainian people as their country is under attack and their days are full of struggle and fear. Let us take a moment. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
I move.
And now second that.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, nay? Agenda has been approved. At this time, we'll open the floor, uh, for public comment on agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
Thank you. If you wish to comment, please step up, take a step up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining the meeting by Zoom, use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining the Zoom by phone. Once you are recognized, you'll be moved into the meeting so you can be heard and make your comment. Also, please state your name and address before your comment. Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, there's not.
All right. I will close public comment. Manager dissents, please review the petition, the receipts of petitions and communications.
Received petitions and communications includes city manager report on pending items, receive correspondence from Community Services and Economic Development Director Bill Merdeza and Community Services and Economic Development Assistant Director Jacob Kane regarding study, housing study, next steps, and the Phase Two report from Dr. Colorelli.
All right, thank you. For the consent calendar, are there any items the commission would like to have removed? Manager dissents, please review the consent calendar.
Yes. Consent items include approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 14th, 2022, consider reappointment to the Tax Increment Financing Authority Board, consider award of contract for the 2022 pavement marking project, and consider budget amendment for the same, which awards the contract to M&amp;M Pavement Markings for $27,339 and authorizes a budget amendment for $1,100 for local streets and $3,440 for major streets fund. Consider setting a special hearing for March 14th, 2022 as required for Green Tree Cooperative Grocery, Inc. through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Community Development Lot Grant Program. Consider approval of a budget amendment for $895,460 for engineering services for the Water Resource Recovery Facility Rehabilitation Project, which is an amendment not for overages, rather it's to move, uh, compensation for engineering work to be done that was originally budgeted in 2021 to the current fiscal year. And then lastly, payrolls and warrants.
Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, we're at item number nine on the agenda. This is to consider approval of the spending plan for the Peak Childcare Stabilization Grant Funds and consider budget amendment of the same. Manager dissents, please give us an overview.
Absolutely. So at our last city commission meeting, we held a work session on the 14th of February regarding the $600,000 plus grant received by our Peak program. The staff prepared a proposal for the allocation of the funds, which includes state mandated bonuses that will be paid to childcare staff, would also include the purchase of supplies and field trips. The grant program will reimburse the city for previous costs that we had incurred in order to offset future potential cost increases to users of the program, and will also be able to challenge more dollars into the scholarship program as well to help those families that are most in need. So a total breakdown of the, um, project allocation is within your city commission packet, and we're asking for your approval of that plan this evening.
All right, the floor is open for discussion if we have any questions. Any concerns, any comments? Commissioner Eke?
We heard a report on this program, um, at the last meeting, and this is a needed program. It's absolutely needed. It is necessary. It helps, it works, and I see no reason why we should not approve the request. I am in support.
Are there any other comments or questions? If there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Commissioner?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. We're into item number 10 on the agenda. This is to consider award of contract to, for the 2022 sidewalk project and a budget amendment of the same, for the same. Manager dissents?
Yep. So the city received bids for sidewalk projects slated for 2022. And when we put this out, we had also added, uh, to our regular 2022 planned work, a alternative project, which is on Preston and Crepo. We received a number of complaints in that area, so we added that project as an alternative to be, uh, included in our bids for this year. Bids came back, and much to no one's surprise, just due to the state of economics out there, they were higher than what we had initially estimated by $27,510. So we come to the city commission tonight with three options, essentially. Option one is to approve the 2022 sidewalk projects as well as the alternative project, and then to also authorize a budget amendment for the $27,510. Option two would be to eliminate that extra project that we had included and authorize the 2022 projects as proposed, and then authorize a budget amendment of $20,840. Or option three would be to have the engineering staff pare down the projects with the contractor in order to meet our budget that was initially set for 2022. After discussing the matter with our, uh, finance director, Mary, uh, Mary Ann Cornexel, we are making the recommendation to the city commission that the, all of the projects be awarded this year, including the alternate project, and also a budget amendment for the $27,510 be approved.
All right, the floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Alsager?
Um, after reading through this, I agree with the recommendation of staff and would support option one.
Commissioner Eke?
I have just one question. Um, where exactly is the optional section that is referred to in this?
On page 168?
You mean geographically?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Location, location, location.
I am looking at my packet to pull up that page.
Erin Stacy's on the call. If you'd like me to bring her in?
That would be fantastic if, if she would be able to answer that question, yes.
I may have missed it, but I was, I, you know, I sort of got a bit lost.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
This is Stacy Towary, city engineer. Um, the alternative location was at the north side of Preston and Crepo Street, um, which is kind of on the southeast side of the Mount Pleasant High School where the walking trail crosses. There's not an appropriate crossing there on, the crossway kind of dumps out into somebody's driveway. So we want to make a better crossing. It gets quite a bit of foot traffic in that area, and we've had a few complaints, um, about the way that the crossing is there, so we'd like to improve that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Alsager?
Um, Stacy, can you direct us to what picture that is, what page?
Um, unfortunately, I don't have the page numbers that you're looking at, um.
Uh, if, if I may, it would be page 182 of the PDF.
Okay.
E packet.
Wow. That'd take a long time to get to. 182.
Looks like it would be the picture on the right side of that page.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with that location, and I told, I completely agree. I work at the high school. It's, it's definitely an area of concern when they have sporting events back there. It could be a mess. Kids are there at night. It's, it would, it should definitely be addressed.
I agree.
Yeah.
I have another sidewalk-related question. This is like a concern that I brought up when I was on the Parks Commission. Um, and that is in regard, and I know that there are some limitations as to what we can do in this area because of the slope of the road, but the, um, I, I made a recommendation to look at this when I was on the Parks Commission. I'm not sure if it ever got brought to the city. But when, uh, on Oak Street, the, the hill that goes down and now really goes straight into our new development where Green Tree is located, as well as into our very parking lot, um, uh, that, in my opinion, is a potentially dangerous site, especially as we do ex- expect more traffic to this parking lot, this location with the Green Tree development and the, and the apartment buildings that are going to go in there. My understanding is that the slope is not appropriate for an accessible sidewalk, so we were unable to construct something the way it is right now. Um, again, I'm not an engineer or anything like that. My only suggestion was to potentially look at the outcome of perhaps changing it into a one-way, where the, and again, traffic flow considerations, but my instincts would tell me that perhaps it would be better to have it a one-way exiting, like similar to what we have over by the county building on Lincoln. Um, and that way, if we were to able to, um, engineer a sidewalk that would be accessible at that point, um, we have, it's a, an area where you have a lot of pedestrians who like access the trails, who access the city, um, buildings around here. And if you're coming up and down that hill, especially if it's dark, traffic doesn't see you, and people are walking down the middle of the road all the time. So I think it would be also visually appealing to have something different there, to have it, an, an entrance to, um, you know, this, this downtown center that we're kind of in right now. I know it's not time for it in this project, but I just want to put it on note. It's something that I've been noticing, and I think it's going to be of increased concern once we have more traffic and residents in this development accessing this parking lot.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, we did discuss this last year, um, as a commission, and, um, you know, we had a lot of, uh, a fairly robust discussion about it. I mean, there's lots of cities that have hills. You know, what we suggested is a temporary thing, I think, was to put a sign at the top of the hill saying, "There's a sidewalk the next street over," or put one down at the bottom of the hill saying, "There's a sidewalk." You know, that, that's common in cities, to be honest. Um, you know, it's a, you know, if you've ever been on Beacon Hill or places in Colorado, I mean, it's a, you know, there, there are times when, you know, the cost was prohibitive to put a sign. I'm happy to look at it again, but we, you know, uh.
I, I do understand that the cost, for sure. I also do think that there's a, uh, it's, it's an area of the downtown area that visually could use a little oomph. Um, that, that area with the, the, the concrete barriers in the parking lot outside of, um, it's just visually kind of awkward when we're talking about this being like a, like a focal point of our, you know, downtown community. Visually, it looks kind of bad and inaccessible.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we did look at this to try to see if we could fit it within the existing conditions. Um, we don't think we can get it to work due to slopes on the east side. Um, the west side would require some retaining walls and would be quite expensive. But we think that in the future, when Oak Street is reconstructed, we can narrow the road and shift it over and still make it work with two-way traffic. I'm not sure if we'll be able to get the sidewalk to meet accessible grades, but, um, we could do it without steps, I think. It, so when we do get to the point where Oak Street needs to be reconstructed, we would definitely look at that.
All right, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, in the meantime, could we put a sign there that just says, you know, sidewalk on the next block or something? I, I, maybe that's not common or something, but I certainly see it in places. I mean, it's, uh.
We could put some sort of pedestrian route sign. I can bring that to the next.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, something to the next traffic control committee meeting.
That would be reasonable. Any, any more questions or concerns? If there's no further discussion, is there a motion, um, to approve the award of the contract? Commissioner Ronan?
Uh, so moved.
Which one would you like?
Uh, number one.
Number one, option one. We have a motion on the floor for option number one.
I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right, now we are at item 11 in the agenda. The commission asked if it was possible to upgrade, to add upgrading to the water mains when the downtown alley reconstruction process takes place. Manager dissents?
Yep, absolutely. So at our last city commission meeting, uh, the city commission voted to move forward with a special assessment of two alleys in our downtown. A request was received from at least one business in the downtown that the city review the potential for a fire suppression system being constructed within those alleys. So we do have, uh, city engineer Stacy Towary. She is here to review a report that, uh, was provided to the city commission. So with that, I will hand it over to Stacy.
Yes, um, so we did take a look at with the reconstruction projects we have coming up in the alleys, whether or not it would be feasible to construct water main in the alleys to provide pressure to the businesses. Um, so members of staff from the water department and the fire department, engineering in downtown met to review some of the constraints on the project. Unfortunately, for most of the locations that we're looking at, um, there are space restrictions and state requirements that limit what we can do in terms of the water main. Um, most of those rightaways are only 20, 20-foot wide. State requirements for separation from water main and other utilities is 10 feet. So in those alleys, we already have some fiber ducting and some sanitary sewer lines that run down in that 20-foot space with buildings on either side, um, in addition to some additional proposed storm sewer that we'd be adding for drainage. So from a constructive, constructibility standpoint, that eliminated, um, the majority of those spaces. Um, additionally, we would need to cut into University Street, which we hadn't planned to do for the alley project, so that's an additional cost and additional street disruption that wasn't planned for the actual alley construction. The one area we, we did think that it may be constructible to extend a water main would be the alley that runs east-west, north of Ventrefayo, between Michigan and University. Um, the, the issue with that stretch is that we would not be able to loop it back to the north-south section that runs back behind Marty's Bar because it's too narrow. There's only a 12-foot rightaway with a sanitary sewer that runs in that area. So we would, what that would result in is a dead-end water main line. Um, and the problem with the dead-end water main line is it becomes a maintenance issue for flushing and also doesn't provide. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it doesn't provide the pressures and the volumes when you don't have a loop system. Um, so we have some concerns about that. So it may be constructible or feasible, but we don't know that it will operate, um, like we'd need to if, if there was a fire situation in the downtown. So our recommendation at this point is we think the best bet would be to, to install fire suppression lines from Broadway Street, where there's looped water main systems, um, that are 12-inch, that can provide the fire flows and the volumes that are needed for those areas. Um, so I guess I'll take any questions on that.
Does the commission have any questions? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, yeah, I, I really appreciate your report because I know nothing about this, so it's very helpful. Um, is, is there a cost difference between going from Broadway or doing the, um, the alternative that you looked into? I mean, is there, is there tremendous savings one way or another?
I think the cost will probably be similar because the broad, or the water mains on the north side of Broadway, so the street and the sidewalk will have to be cut to be able to tap in. So it'll, it'd be similar in terms of cost.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, for example, Mr. Bacca said that he had no fire suppression in his building, and if we have to go from Broadway, how would you get it to him on University?
I think for his property and the prop, the building to the north of him, they would still have to come off University.
Good. Makes sense.
Yep. The 200 building to the north of them already has fire suppression. The, that Isabella Bank owns.
Okay, so if we, if we wanted to get linking to, uh, for fire suppression, the best way to do it would be to go from Main or from University?
From Broadway or Main.
Broadway and, and University, right?
From Main or Broadway.
Yeah, from Main or Broadway, okay.
Yep. University only has a six-inch water main also.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Ronan?
Just a comment, I'd like to say thank you very much for looking into that. I, I mean, that's a significant, um, yeah, obviously technical or whatever, but thank you.
Yes, it's, it's appreciated. We needed to know what we can and can't do, and this definitely gives us an idea of where we can move to next.
Yeah, it was definitely a good thing to look into. We thought it was a good idea. It's just unfortunate that we don't have the space to, to make it work.
I know, all those people 100 years ago just didn't even realize what we were going to do today, building all those buildings in the back like that. I appreciate it.
You think they would have been more thoughtful?
I know. All right, if there's no other comments, um, we appreciate your time, uh, Stacy, and, um, for evaluating this for us. At this time, um, I will open the floor for commissioners and staff to make any announcements that are on city-related business or new business. Commissioner Bush?
I, I just want to make, um, constituents aware that there is a, a new nonprofit organization. It's not, I guess it's not established as a nonprofit, but the goal is to, to reach that establishment. We had a meeting tonight at Karma Cat Cafe, um, and this is an organization interested in, um, working with education prevention of, um, of issues with stray cats in our community. Um, this organization is being, um, started with the support and cooperation of Karma Cat Cafe, hats, and the code enforcement with, um, Assistant Chief Lob Singer, you know, being aware and cooperative with this, um, grassroots organization. Um, names were being thrown around tonight, so the name isn't solid yet. That's gonna, uh, the votes were kind of tally tonight. We're gonna know in the next couple of days. If you are interested in, um, receiving communications about this organization, you could probably message Karma Cat Cafe. This is, this organization is, I want to be clear, is not Karma Cat Cafe, but they were just offering as host and intermediary as we get started. Actually, for that matter, you could contact me. Please feel free to contact me if you want information about being part of this grassroots organization forming to help with, um, education prevention and also with, um, uh, trapping spay, neuter, and release.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners that want to make an announcement or bring up new business? I'd like to remind everyone that, um, we still, in Isabella County, we are still very low in the vaccination rates. Um, and it is best that, to protect ourselves and to move forward, to, um, vaccinate if you haven't already, get your second shot if you're ready for it, or your booster if you're ready. Um, you'll notice that, uh, you know, the commissioners, we had discussed whether or not to mask. It was up to each commissioner to decide so, that even though the mask mandate has been lifted throughout the state. We do appreciate everyone's, um, view on this. We respect how people feel about this, but it, when it comes down to it, it's, it's your own personal decision. Are there any other question, any other comments? All right. It's, we will now open the, uh, floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
All right, if you wish to make. All right. If you wish to make a comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining us by Zoom, use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are recognized, you'll be moved in to the meeting so you can be heard and make your comment. Please state your name and address before doing so. Is there anyone in Zoom that wishes to make a comment?
No raised hands.
And I will close the public comment. We have a work session tonight. It will be a discussion on developmental philosophy. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess and then return for the work session. Thank you. Okay, so the work session is about developing a philosophy for the city that can create, that can be used to create a decision-making model or process for boards, commissions, and staff. First, I'm going to give you a little bit of a background of myself. I'm a mental health therapist, and I work with those that have been recently charged and convicted of domestic violence and assault less than murder and substance abuse. I teach my clients problem solving. Being able to effectively, um, problem solve leads to more successes. I'm not an expert. I've only been doing this for about seven years, but I can attest to the fact that being able to use a decision-making model in life is very helpful. Now, before, before making decisions, an overriding philosophy needs to be set. A philosophy represents the set values and beliefs. It is used to support decisions made. I am governed by the ACA Code of Ethics for my profession. As with other ethical philosophies, it includes the phrase "to do no harm." I think that's a good phrase to think about in any profession. Now, there are many different ways to think about philosophies. One way that is never good is that if group A wins, group B loses. We should always strive to do best practice, which is to resolve issues where everyone feels good about it. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I know. She's gonna hit me with the damn, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah, I am.
This isn't the first time we've discussed this, right? I just want to remind us of that. A couple of years ago, when we first got on the commission, we did a session on problem solving, on saying, you know, how can the city sort of come to the point where they're making more effective solutions, whether resolving things more? I, I also want to mention that I think the mayor's given everybody a copy of a text called Strong Towns, right? And everybody should have a copy of that. We've been using that for like three years now to sort of get people on pa, on board with sort of thinking about how you can grow the city, how the city can work together, and how we can put some changes in place, right? So, so I think, I would argue that I think some of these overriding philosophies are just useful for the city to think about. I mean, oftentimes I go to meetings and what I hear is, you know, oh, we can't do an abatement here because that gives those people money and I don't get any money out of it. Or, you know, we can't do this because those people will benefit and then I won't benefit. Or, you know, you know, some sense that because someone else is getting something special, it means that nobody else is, right? And that's, that's a poor strategy, to be honest. It just doesn't, it doesn't serve the city well. It doesn't serve the county well, and it doesn't serve the residents well. You know, the argument is more what mayor's talk, and I'm sorry, I'll be quiet now for like a minute.
Another thing that we can look at is the rising tide lifts all boats. It's a pretty common phrase. We understand that, if we understand that the staff, the commissions, the boards, everyone that works for the city is part of that tide, it makes sense because we must work together in order to be reasonable and to lift all the boats. We also need to remember that we are public servants, and it is better our, our residents do better than our city does better. But one thing that we have to remember, and this is something that sometimes is lost in the translation, any loss to an individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is considered injustice. In other words, we must be aware of the possible impacts on the community. If there is no harm done to the community in granting, and granting to the individual will create success for them, then the success is for the entire community. I think that if we put all three of these together, we would create a good philosophy for our city. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, and I think, you know, I don't think there's any argument that this needs to be solved tonight. But I, I do think the argument is that we need to stop thinking about that. What is the overall philosophy of the city? You know, what do we do, you know, and it may take a while, but what, what do we do moving forward so that everybody's on the same page? So that we know these are the basic philosophies that sort of override our decision-making, or that are overarching the decision-making.
Yeah, so simply put, effective problem solving should optimize the function of the city staff, the departments, boards, and all of the commissions. When confronted by a problem, the goal might be to generate a high-quality alternatives that are consistent with our overarching philosophy. Now, when you think about philosophy, a lot of people get confused or get frustrated with that word. My philosophy, like I said, because of my ethics, is to do no harm, to be socially aware, and to lift up my clients, to help them. The philosophy of a city is, like we said, rise a boat, a rising tide raises all boats. If it does no harm to the community but gives success to the individual, it gives success to the community. We want to make, we want to optimize the effectiveness of our decision-making. Now, rational problem-solving model is, you know, usually seven steps. I've had to, I just wrote an ethics paper and I had to use a 10-step model, so I'm, I'm cutting back a little bit here. Let me walk you through this decision-making model. We make decisions every day, right? Some of them seem really effortless, like what shoes am I going to wear today, right? And some of them are more difficult. Like what am I going to do at the end of the day if I'm trying to learn how to do something new? You know, how, what steps do I take? The seven-step model here is pretty basic, but it can help create success in decision-making. The first thing we do is identify the problem. Rarely is there one cause to a problem or a concern. Due to, due to the complexity of city government, multiple problems, multiple causes exist. So what we ask ourselves is who has the problem? What is the What is the problem? When is it a problem? And where is it a problem? Once we have answered those questions, then we go to gathering facts. Facts include historic records, you know, what's actually happening right now in the city, and where is everything going? Identifying the stakeholders. Stakeholders are people that are affected, people in businesses that are affected by the decision that's going to be made. Understand where they're standing from, what they're looking at. We must always keep our finger on the pulse of the city, and we have to work together. We need to avoid any us-versus-them approach. The goal is to be collaborative, to coordinate with existing departments, boards, and commission. Then we list alternatives. Now, if you were in my, if you were in my office and I was working with you, I would make you come up with 15 fabulous 15 alternatives, because the more alternatives you come up with, the higher chance that you're gonna come up with something that works. Now, due to the complexity involved in the city, rarely is there one single best alternative. And I can tell you, the first thing that comes to mind to solving a problem is probably not the thing that's gonna solve the problem. That's why we will need lots of minds. Lots of minds make great ideas. They come up with great alternatives. So you want to come up with as many as possible. You list the alternatives. You remember that exceptions make poor policy. So we never want to take an exception that is happening and change, and use it to change a policy or an ordinance, not if it's only happened once. Now, if this problem comes repeatedly to you, then you have to start thinking about what might need to be revised, and what might be more useful. And sometimes, we combine the alternatives to come up with a unique one. Then we're going to adopt a utility model. Now, a utility model is very simple. You place the alternatives or the solutions. You give a plus if it's a positive, or a minus if it's a negative, on short-term, long-term, time and effort, cost-benefit, morals, the philosophy of the city, and any state or legal issues that might be part of that. So let's say we're going to, we're gonna allow a, a, a new building to be built. We're gonna look at having a building built. It's not really meeting the ordinance, but we're looking at it because it's going to be a hot dog stand. You know, short-term, if we, will it take up, is there anything in the city that would benefit from the short-term? Probably the business owner, being able to build it. But long-term, would it be reasonable? How much time and effort would it take to look at the, look at the problem at hand, and how we could help it align more with the ordinance or give a variance? What's the cost-benefit? If we do this, does it mean that there's going to be more benefit or more cost to the city? Morally, does it work? If the philosophy of the city is to bring success to an individual as long as it doesn't do harm to the community, would this bring success to the individual and not do harm to the community? And are there any state and local, or state and legal issues that might come into play here? Commissioner Bush?
This is something you're proposing, correct?
Yes.
To talk about.
To talk about. Okay, so I wanna, I wanna potentially talk about adding something. Because I think it deserves a separate column, would be environmental impact.
Oh, that's a good one, yeah. So, and this is not, yeah, I mean, if we decide to use this, or if the commissions and boards decide that this is a way to go, you can create your own criteria, but we want to make sure that it covers all of the bases. And I agree with Commissioner Bush, putting environmental impact is important on there. Now, once we figure this all out, we've rated all of our solutions, we're going to choose an alternative. Now, to choose an alternative means that we select the highest-rated alternative. We add up all the pluses, we subtract all the minuses. Maybe we've got, two of our alternatives have four, one of our alternatives have two, and the rest of them have between one and three. Sometimes, when we have alternatives that are close in how, how well they're rated, we use them in conjunction with each other. We may use them as a, we may choose them because this one goes, and then this one would immediately follow. So it kind of gives the, it solves the problem all the way around. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, oftentimes, you can look at short-term solutions and long-term solutions and just combine them. I don't know what else to, you know, we've published, you know, I don't know, two dozen papers on this model in different applications, in different aspects. I'll be happy to give a reference list if you need it, but I mean, it's, you know.
And once we have decided what the alternative is, we take action. We inform the stakeholders of the decision. We offer assistance in implementing the alternative choice, and we try to maintain a positive and supportive attitude. And then the last step, sometimes feels like the most important, because what we're doing is we're going to evaluate and learn from the action that was taken. During the time period, during the next time period or scheduled meeting, you always review the impact of the decision made. You never just make a decision, handle it, and then move on, because everything that you make a decision on is something that you're going to learn about yourself and learn about how you handle things. So you discuss the alternative ways that may have been enhanced, maybe the process or the outcome, maybe making a quicker decision, maybe having more buy-in from residents, increase the satisfaction from those involved. And then you think about ways that you could optimize the outcomes going forward. Making a list of the decisions that you've made sometimes helps, because then when something comes forward, and you already have a list of some, some issues that you've dealt with, you can look back at it and say, well, we did this, this, this is how we handled it, and this was the outcome. Would that be appropriate for here? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel all the time, too. But this is the decision-making model. This is what I use on a daily basis, and many of us, if you think about it, we all, we all use this. We all think back to, what am I doing today? What are the decisions I have to make? How do I handle them? What is it going to involve? But what it really comes down to is every decision that we make is based on our philosophy of life, it's based on our perspective. And I think that having a philosophy that, that is an overriding philosophy for the entire city puts us all on the same page and helps us move forward together to help the city. That's it. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, okay, so I'm obsessed right there. You could throw me off the ship soon, right? I'll be loaded off before too long. But, you know, the other thing is, you know, is sometimes people work in silos, so, you know, that what they're doing is separate from what other people in the city are doing. And we have that at the university all the time. It's a real problem, right? Because you have someone working on a problem in biology, someone working on a problem in psychology, and they're doing stuff independently, whereas if they work together, they come up with better, and I know I'm obsessing, they come up with better solutions, but it's the same thing with city departments, I would say. I mean, I think city departments should be working together. If you're making a decision, bring it to the commission before it's decided, or bring it to, I don't know, but, you know, try to avoid the silo approach, where everybody's dealing with something independently and they're not sharing with other people, because again, oftentimes, during that fact-finding, or during that thinking about it, you can come up with multiple solutions. I just, I just hope we can do something like that. Thank you, you know, be quiet now.
Well, my goal is that, when I ran for city commission, one of the things that I wanted to do was I wanted to improve the city. I wanted to help the city grow. I have not been here my entire life, but I love this city, and I love the people that are here. And working together, creating a philosophy that says who we are, that helps us move forward in everything. It helps us understand how we're going to attract our business here. It helps us understand how we're going to improve lives of our residents here. It helps us understand how we're going to handle our environmental footprint. All of that philosophy tells us how we want to do things. And I think that that's, that's the, that's pretty much the, the whole premise of this is, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when we're moving forward. Thank you. Commissioner Akay?
I, I like this idea, but I have a question, so my assumption...
You need to speak into your microphone.
All right, I forgot. Apologies. All right, so I like this idea that you're proposing this. My assumption is that we are not going to work on this tonight, right?
Correct.
So this is a proposal that, you know, we need to contemplate, and at a certain point, we are going to engage one another, or begin a conversation on this particular, on the proposal. Is that my understanding? Am I correct?
I believe so. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I think, I think, again, you know, at the end of this meeting, we could say, hey, it's a waste of time, don't bother. You know, you could say, hey, maybe it's a good idea, think about it further, or, sure, I mean, I don't know that there's a, yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Akay. But my hope is that that would happen, but I mean, it's up to the people here.
Well, I also wonder whether, I mean, this is actually perhaps an addendum to Commissioner Ronan's comment about different city departments working together. So by implication, or extension, or really by implication of what he's saying, I am going to assume that in this conversation, therefore, we would include staff in the conversation, because I don't see how the commission alone should make the decision or develop a philosophy for the city where we have staff that generally are the ones who are, you know, staff members that are the ones who are in much more contact with city residents daily. I mean, I live in the city, I, you know, I don't have a business, I'm in more contact with students and people around my residential area than, you know, the people who work in the offices here who actually handle the daily workings of the city, and then answer the critical questions when those issues come up. So my assumption is that it would include a conversation, that it would be a conversation that would include staff contribution, that we will perhaps maybe devote some time, ideally, you know, as a group, to talk about this, or to envision this philosophy. It's just simply a suggestion, but it's also Akay trying to unravel, untangle her thinking. I think staff need to be involved somehow.
Commissioner Halsager?
Your comments have made me think back that Monday or two ago, I know the city staff had a work day together, and was anything like this part of your agenda?
We're talking about President's Day, so, yeah, we ended up closing to the general public on those days. That was a day for departments to meet and to review goals and objectives where they currently were, to realign goals and objectives, try to project where they were going to finish with the year. So that's the overarching theme there. In the future, what I want to do is more professional development with some of those days. It used to be before the COVID pandemic here, that staff would meet for professional development, for group training, team building, those kind of things, and we'd love to bring that back.
Great.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I, my understanding is typically in work sessions, what happens is we'll discuss some, the problem is the city has like 10,000 things to do and, you know, 5,000 minutes or something. So, you know, if we have a work session like this, my understanding is what would happen is we'd say, hey, is it worthwhile pursuing this or not? If it's not worthwhile pursuing it, then the city's not gonna take it up, right? Is that, but if we said that, hey, it's okay, then it would go to the city, and yeah, of course, the staff, I mean, I, my assumption would be that the staff would discuss it, or the city manager would bring it back at some, sometime, and we, is that? It's a way of, it's a way of saying to the city staff, hey, this is important, spend some time on it, I think. Is that, does that?
Commissioner Bush?
My comment is two parts, but relates to basically the same thing, which is transparency and communication. So I'm very familiar with how things like mission statements and goals and objectives are used and presented to the public. If we were to adopt this sort of model, I do think one of the elements you mentioned, you know, informing stakeholders, I mean, in and of itself, right now, we are talking about solving a problem and informing stakeholders. How would you propose we inform the public that this is a philosophy by which we are working on city development? Like, is this gonna be like a, I mean, this is a really good presentation, and I feel like I'm gonna go home and think about it for my own life, but in terms of how it's being used in the city, I feel like we, how would we, you propose we, we share it with the community that, hey, this is how the city is, is operating, and these are, this is our philosophies? Like, how would that be made aware to the public?
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, and I'm talking, well, anyway, whatever. But I think the argument would be that, you know, we'd come up with something, the city staff would come up with some type of model, we'd discuss it, and if we decided it was okay, we'd have a hearing on it or something, and we'd say, hey, we're thinking about this, maybe get some input from the public, and I, I, I'm not the, can I do that?
Yeah.
If I can, I'll, I'll just, I'm like a sponge right now, I'm absorbing everything that's being said, taking good notes on this. I think what I want to do is go back with the team, evaluate this, try to extrapolate, and there's some good value here, extrapolate that into something that's going to be action in the future. So right now, I'll be honest, I don't have a ready answer, but I'm certainly taking a lot of notes here, and again, we'll talk with the team about that.
Yeah, this isn't something that the city commission is going to decide, because the city commission comes and goes, right? We run for, we run, we get on the, on the commission, sometimes we're here for a couple of terms, sometimes we're gone after one. What this is, is how are we going to, how are we going to think about the city, and what the city is about, and how the city is going to grow and handle issues that come forward? And this would be, this would be a staff, this would be the department heads, this would be everyone coming together and saying, what do we want to see happen here? Commissioner Ronan?
Or not. I mean, if the commission decides this isn't a priority, then it's not a, I go to not a priority, I mean, I know.
Commissioner Akay?
I don't think that the commission is saying it is not a priority. I think we have all said that this is a wonderful idea, it's something we want to do. The issue, however, is how inclusive we want the conversation to be. I like collaborative work, you know, where, you know, so we've got the city manager here who has just said he will take the information back to the staff and have a conversation. And so if it means, therefore, that the city manager serving as the liaison between the commission and the staff will then engage the staff in discussing this particular philosophy, and then coming back to us and saying, this is where the staff is, and the commission comes to some kind of agreement, you know, collaborative understanding of this philosophy, it works for me. I just want to make sure that, you know, as the mayor has said, that we are on the same page in terms of the conversation or engagement of this particular philosophy, and in terms of how we implement it or get, disseminate information about it. That is, that, that's just simply my own concern. I don't think that we're saying that it's not, I am not saying that it's not a... I don't think that we're saying that it's not, I am not saying that it's not a good thing. It is important to develop a philosophy that guides us, just as it is equally important to develop a strategic plan that guides us in things that we do. I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page, not just simply the city commission, but also the staff that does the day-to-day work and has much more contact with people, residents, than we have in terms of day-to-day issues. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Commissioner Allsager?
Well, I just want to thank our mayor for bringing this to our attention, and it starts the conversation.
I agree.
It's a good idea.
Are there any other comments or questions or? Commissioner Ronan, do you have anything else?
So, you know what, you know, Paul's going to bring that taser back. I'm just saying, you know, I, I, actually, I wouldn't mind hearing from the vice mayor, I wouldn't mind hearing from Brian if they think it's a good idea, not that I get to do that, but I mean, it isn't just a work, it's just a work session, right? I mean, if we're all on board, then have the city staff spend some time on it. But, you know, if not, then, I mean, I think.
Vice mayor?
Sure, yeah. I've been sort of typing out some of my thoughts so I can speak them more clearly. I think that this is a good discussion, and I think it has really great potential for having major impacts on how we make decisions and how we pursue the quality of our policymaking. So I'm glad that we're having this discussion. I think we sort of have clear ways of paths forward, and we don't have that right now, and it's creating some cognitive dissonance in what we're going to do and what this means. And I think part of the discussion we're having tonight should be, you know, what, what do we do with this discussion? Can you send us the presentation that you created?
Yes, I can.
Okay, cool. So that would be a good step one, perhaps. Part of it, too, I think, should be, is this going to be just a discussion that we sort of talk about, we come forward and we keep talking about it? Or should it be more like tangible policy decisions? Do we want to revise a mission statement or something like that? Is this going to change how we advertise our philosophy to residents? Part of the conversation should be, I think, you know, how do we involve residents more in how we make decisions? And I think that's something we discuss, should discuss, too, moving forward with this. So, you know, should this just be, are we talking? Or, which is great, we should be collaborating and sharing ideas, but are we going to do anything tangible with decisions, with policy, with how we communicate to residents as well?
Yeah, I think that when we, you know, looking at an overarching, overriding philosophy over the city, understanding everyone, understanding what that means, and then using a decision-making model with that philosophy in mind, with everyone using the same way of looking at problems, the same way of gathering information and understanding who the stakeholders are and alternatives and everything, and implementing in the same way, we become more. Yes, efficient, smoother in our business. You know, people will know what to expect, kind of thing. And I think that that's, that's what we, you know, that's what I'm looking for.
That sounds good to me.
And I just sent the email. Commissioner Ake?
Okay, good. I like this because I do think that it will engender trust. Because one of the things that I heard while I was walking the streets during the campaign is that we don't know what's going on with the city, we don't trust them, we don't do this. So I do think that having this, you know, having a clear philosophy and having buy-in and, you know, creating the possibility of conversation with residents, you know, across units, that it really will engender trust, because that's what we want. You know, this city is for all of us. It's not for you or for me or for different, you know, factions or groups. It is for all of us. If we fail, we fail the entire city. And whatever decision we make, we make on behalf of the whole city. We make a decision that has implications for the city. I don't make decisions just for myself. So I do think that, you know, if we create a very clear, you know, I heard, you know, city managers say actionable, yeah, actionable, implementable structure, one that is clear, transparency is important, one that people buy, buy, you know, understand and embrace, and one that everybody can articulate easily, you know, it really will help us a lot. And I will keep quiet, just like Ronan.
Commissioner Bush?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ake, because that's basically what I was getting at with my, if we do develop this philosophy, I do think there should be an emphasis on how, first of all, it involving the transparency, you know, like Commissioner Ake said, four elements of trust, but also as how it's presented. Because, I mean, that is something that I think we've all heard as commissioners, that the public wants to at least have the opportunity to be more involved and feel like they have that input. And I think that if that is, if we're transparent in this philosophy of decision-making, you know, it's going to be a good opportunity to, like Commissioner Ake said, have a, have a discussion, involve more constituents and whatnot.
I'm good. I feel like I'd be beating a dead horse. You know, everybody has brought up great ideas, and the word I take away from it is transparency.
Commissioner Ronan, do you have one last word? No? It sounds like we are all in agreement that this is something that could, you know, mayor or manager of dissent should take to, the staff take to the department heads and have further discussion on.
Absolutely.
All right. Are there any, anyone else want to say anything or bring anything up? I'm going to ask Commissioner Ronan one more time. All right. At this time, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Second. Oops. All those in favor?
Yes.
I did have.
No, you're too late.
I just wanted to thank the people. I'm going to talk anyway. I did want to thank the chairs of the planning commission and the zoning for attending. We should have acknowledged you more, and I apologize, and Jacob and Brian, I apologize for not acknowledging that more. Thank you very much for coming here. And I think, we hope we all work together to sort of, I apologize for the last, but I did want to say that. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you for all attending, and I hope that we can move forward with this.
We'll get a sense of, you know.
So we are adjourned at 8:16.